We've got Scotts in Pankinny tonight, so he's joining us online. And Jim Kane will not be here this evening.
Thank you.
Hey, do a mic check here with Scott. One more time, Scott, would you like to say something back for us?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Council.
Great, loud and clear, appreciate that. Okay. The hour has arrived, so at this time, we will welcome everyone to the Acton City Council meeting for Monday, June 10th, 2025. And with that, we'll begin with the pledge of allegiance. I've called to stand. Recite the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, then completing the roll call tonight, we'd ask Trevor Dersky, EJ Bell, Samantha Peterson, David Fisher, and absent is Jim Kane. Scott Florrie, City Administrator is online. Municipal Institute these few days. And okay. Hey, item number two on the agenda is approval of the agenda by the city council. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda? Motion to approve. Motion by Fisher, do we have a second?
All second.
Second by Peterson. Any further discussion? Can you hear it, nuns? Roll call vote is to Trevor Dersky, EJ Bell, Samantha Peterson, David Fisher. He is actually absent, motion carries. Okay, at this time, we will provide opportunity for the citizens to address the council and the items not on the agenda. And in conformance with Iowa Open Meetings laws, no action or deliberation can occur on items presented during the citizens' forum. We'd ask that you come to the podium and state your name and limit your comments to no more than three minutes. Do we have any comments from the public tonight? Okay, seeing none. Moving on then to unfinished business. We have a request to purchase a Vermeer vacuum excavator trailer. And with that, that item was tabled at the last council meeting, and that would require a motion to take the item off the table. And so do we have a motion by city council to move that? Motion by Fisher. That was second by Dersky. Any further discussion? Can you hear none? The roll call vote would be Trevor Dersky, EJ Bell, Samantha Peterson, David Fisher. At this time, we will motion carries, so that item is on the table, and we would review the requests with Jared Tomlinson, Public Works Department, and Scott Florrie, City Administrator. And I want to thank Jared for coming out of vacation tonight to join us. It's a great night. But appreciate that. And with that, Jared, would you like to comment on the item?
If there was a question for me to be here, sorry, it's not been the last meeting. Baseball, but I'm here today, so Scott had mentioned that you guys have a question for me. Here to answer them, the questions you got, so.
Mayor, maybe if I could jump in, just give a little intro on that first.
There you go. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank, yep, thank you, thank you, Mayor Council. Just some items in your packet, council addressing this. As was mentioned, purchase of a jetback trailer for the Public Works Department. This is something that the department, some of these services we presently contract out for. So prior to me arriving, this was something that was put in the budget as a request for fiscal year 26. So this would be a 26 item, not a fiscal year 25 item. Some of the uses for the jetback include culvert cleaning, curb stop repairs, storm sewer cleaning. One area in particular that talking to Todd, where I was able to reduce his budget a bit, was where we do were required by the DNR to do this testing of the lines or service lines for lead and copper. And so he had in his budget to contract out for some of that. With this equipment, we'd be able to do that in-house quite a bit cheaper than what we'd have to contract out for that. Again, it's just a very versatile and useful piece of equipment when we get into areas. So like when, for example, Mid-America is in town in Alliance, they're digging around their utilities that may or may not be buried at the adequate depth, depending upon what part of town they're in. Instead of using like an excavator in some of those areas, they'll use a jetback because it's a little bit more of a finesse type piece of equipment for exposing utilities for excavation that again may only be 18 inches, couple of feet deep. Also, an area is for main valve box cleanings. That's an area I know in the past, we've had a lot of trouble with that get kind of gunked up with mud and sand from the street. Just very useful as a tool to kind of clean that up as opposed to having to do all of that by hand. And then, of course, again, maybe the number one thing that you use these for is for sanitary sewer backups and cleaning and jetting out the lines just to prevent backups. And then when we get in a situation of a backup, being able to respond quickly in those circumstances. So you've got some documents there in the packet that identify, I think, as Mayor indicated, the purchase would be from Vermeer. And the amount was $65,306.8. Jared provided just some materials on the machine itself. Those are the colored pictures there in your packet. And then I just asked him also, and he provided some materials there about what the cost of that is. Services when we have to outsource that versus what his estimate was if we brought that in-house. So that's pretty much what I've got for some background material. I know Jared's there, and I don't know if he wanted to add anything to that as well, but be happy to take any questions.
The only thing that I'd like to add is I did some quick numbers. There's roughly 175 sanitary sewer manholes in the streets down there. Roughly 790 south for each resident of building in this town. Roughly 200 water main valves. So you have a water main break to shut the mains off so we can get them fixed. Like Scott mentioned, most of those are out on the street, so do the winter sand, dirt, mud, fill them up. We sometimes keep it on them, so this tool would help us to back those up and get on those valves shut off and pitch a banner. There's roughly 10 miles of storm sewer this back would be used for. Do they plug some storm sewers? I know last week, Mike and I went up to Rizview and popped a couple manholes. And storm sewer manholes, and they're full of cornstoffs, we call them some baseball, garbage can lids, shingles. That would help us to, the back would help us to remove that debris, to keep the storm sewer flowing properly. Storm sewer backups. Also, like, I also noticed off the parking lot there, the spring, we had a manhole out in front of City Hall here was three quarters full of debris, storm sewer. Sanitary manhole came from the depot, and we had to call Kenway to back it out. I haven't seen it, I didn't see the bell down that much, but that would have been something we could have done. Clear up, down, suck that out, and went on our merry way, and I had to hire Kenway to come in. Do that kind of work, so. It's a very useful tool. I know surrounding cities have them, and they use the heck out of them, and they use their ability when it comes to excavations, small stuff.
How long does this piece of equipment last? Like, will it last for a while, I assume?
Yeah, I've heard up to 20 years. I know, you know, the same tension that comes, that who we call can do the little stuff. It's just going on 20 years old and he's every day. So I could see easily 15, 20 years out of it.
I just add that, so, and the other communities I've been at, we bought the big truck jetbacks. But yeah, that was generally a 15 to 20 year capital purchase item that we made. We had a lot more miles of storm sewers, sanitary sewer, and stuff to maintain in those other communities that we do here. But yeah, I'd say generally a 15 to 20 year lifecycle.
So Jared, I was the one that did ask, because initially, when we talked about it during budgeting asked for an ROI or a return on investment. If you have a business, you've got to, and you've got to go to a banker to go borrow this. They're going to ask you, okay, what's your return on investment? And then you have to supply them with information. Again, you supplied us with some information there, but I don't know what that ROI is. Is it a one-year, three-year, or a five-year, or a 10-year payback? I don't know. The, but that's what I've been looking for since budget time, and that's what I was looking for for this meeting. I did have some other concerns. And my, these are not in order by priority or anything. But storage of the equipment, you know, having that, you don't want to tell them. You've got to have a place for it to be a home for it. And you know as well as I do, right now, our storage is limited. But did you have a place where you wanted to go with that for a home?
Yep, so that would go down in where the fires shed it now. So delivery, if we said jump on it now, delivery would not be till probably end of September, first part of October. So the plan was to, we have room out at the wastewater plant, or the water plant stored till the fire department has moved up here to their new building, then it would go down into that facility along with the excavator, excavator, put all of our snow equipment back inside where it was. Our big tractor mower, all that stuff would go back inside the building.
That's what that building was. Would have set out a very long way.
No, 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 we would, we would just put it through the water plant for now until
Don't get
They have to open the water pump down. There's rooms you can go, that trailer, and Todd would have them to park his truck in also. There is room in the water plant.
The, the next concern I had, and this is a huge one from my perspective, to safety. We, as a city where we can't hardly get insurance here, we're uninsured. I think is what the term was used almost due to the fact that if we outsource things, we don't have that safety aspect. And I'm not from, I know what this piece of equipment is, but I don't know the safety aspects of it or anything from an operator's standpoint, what it takes. But that is a huge concern of mine. Do you have anything there that you want to add?
This one that we quoted and one that we still with it, it has a tall strong arm on it. So it's an arm that actually suspended the vacuum hose, so we don't have to lift that with on an arm that's agitated, so it makes it easy to view to swing it around, and you're not carrying that extra weight to save on you. Otherwise, really, your hole, the hole that you could do isn't really big enough for a person to fall into. You're looking for like a false safety. It would take you a long time to make a hole that big, and if we were going to do a hole that big, we would use other means of like an excavator or whatnot. This one is basically for doing your smaller sized hole that the person cannot physically fall into.
What about manholes? You can never have at the manhole?
It was going to manhole, yeah. But it's got that arm to
Lower it in from a weight standpoint, is that what you're saying?
Yep, so that arms support the weight, and then whatever is vacuuming at the time, it will support that weight. So there would be no heavy lifting. I mean, in theory, they say somebody that's, they're not fit on standing size, should be able to maneuver that while it is running.
From a maintenance perspective, do you maintain that piece of equipment?
We would.
So is what, do you know from a maintenance standpoint, what it actually takes?
The only really moving parts is the vacuum pump, so we did grease belts for that, oil changes for the motor, and then grease in your strongarm. We'll learn to talk about it.
So it's pretty simple.
Yeah, no more complicated than the mower.
I'm sorry.
Be no more complicated than my, like our mowers are.
Oh, I got you, I got you. And the last question I have is from a, if we outsource it, which we typically do, we always, excuse me. The resources for that will require additional resources. So what you would have outsourced, you wouldn't have to do it. So from a resource standpoint, is it going to require more resources?
No, it would just require time, I mean. I mean, eventually, we would need to hire, if you're talking about hiring personnel, some point down the road, we will need to hire personnel. But at this point with that, no, it would, it would just require time for Mike and I and Todd to do the work.
And maybe I'm outthinking this, but we did some repair on the waste treatment facility due to the fact that we had a washout that was going underneath riprap and stuff. And my concern is, is we buy this, all this equipment that we bring in here, and then we not use it. And we outsource it still, which is another additional cost on top of that. Do you ever foresee that?
What was the other?
We, we have a water that was going under the riprap that was undermining the riprap, so they had to come in there and but we had to pay a contractor to come in and fix it.
Was that what?
Was that what it was?
I don't think it gave you.
Yeah.
So that you asked me for that specific question, or what?
I'm not asking about that specifically, but you know, we buy the equipment to do these jobs, and then we outsource tasks like that that could have been done in-house.
This is to eliminate that outsource.
So this eliminates it.
Eliminates the smaller stuff that we can do. But there might be times when, like, if we have to do maintenance on the lift station, back it out, that will not reach that far. 40 feet down, we can't reach that far with it, so we'd have to hire that one out. Kenway with the big half million dollar truck, you want to suck that out. But we could do most of the other stuff. The only other thing that we would not be able to do would be the jetting and hammering of the storm of the sanitary sewers because they run 300, 400 feet per manhole, between manholes. This would not have a hose that long with the capacity to thing that much. This would be more for manhole out here that was half full, three quarters full of stuff. Sand, debris, stuff like that, manhole storm sewers, be more of that stuff. But the bigger projects, we still have to find out that we don't have the half million dollar truck that had it located nowhere.
When we hired them, all right, for all the questions, but when we hired them trucks out, were they the big projects?
Yeah. So they came into, Kenway came into the camera and jetting of all the sanitary sewers in town, which they're going to come do the rest of the month this year. But yes, that is a big project. Kenway to do. The storm, the lift stations, when they did the vault for pumps, that was, Kenway, that's a big project. Where this back would not work to that.
So I'm going to summarize for you. You tell me if I've said anything incorrectly. We're still going to need Kenway to come in here and do the bigger projects. This is a tool that will help you do smaller projects that you would probably have to do by hand. Which eliminates, helps with the safety aspects of the operation rather than we can use that piece of equipment to eliminate the safety aspects of you actually having to do it by hand. I don't know how you determine the return on investment.
Hard to say, I mean. We also could do it for putting in culverts, which there's, I don't know how many culverts that are down here. There's a lot. I know right now, we have a list of shop on the whiteboard, there's 18 culverts that they claim. And that's just between Second Avenue and Fourth Avenue. So I mean, in theory, that's going to be a non-stop project, would be plenty culverts. With all the dirt, so, to fill culverts to go back culverts every year.
Is that something we're not addressing right now, or we just
We, we do have CRC come in and do it. But they're usually so busy, you cannot get them to come in.
What do they charge? That's what I was going to ask. What do we know what they even charge?
Well, they charge a hundred and fifty dollars an hour, like a three-hour minimum.
Which, so that's higher than the quoted rates here, which are Kenway, I'm assuming.
Yeah, Kenway, I don't, Kenway doesn't do it, if they do a three-hour minimum.
This says a two-hour, 100 for labor, 125 for supervisor, 150 for the vac. So maybe this way, how many weeks in a month would you use something like this?
Probably use two, maybe three.
And then how many hours for those weeks?
I would say, and what else comes up?
Like, what would an average job be in four hours?
We try to do those four hours a day. Next day, we lose no running for
Well, if you had the back.
Stuff going on, probably at least one full day a week.
Three, two to three times a month? Though, I'm trying to come up with an idea of total number of hours in the year. And I got it ready. And then the difference between what they're going to charge at the, somewhere between 100 and 300, and what your hourly rate is, which I have right here, is the gain. And we just divide the price of the equipment by that, and that's the time to pay back, roughly.
But the other question I have on top of that is like, you said all the culverts that are currently, that need to be addressed, and we all know that. Do you roughly have an idea how long one takes? I have no idea.
When CRC does, they're there for five, four and a half.
A culvert?
Yep.
Okay, so.
So.
No, that, that helps with
It all depends. You got the ones like, one at Fourth Avenue, apartment here, there's a street corner spot.
Sure.
Or you got some that are, say, over in your neighborhood that are
Like, yeah, no, I totally get where you're going.
Runs out, we could be hitting out on
Sure, nope, I
There's something we're going to have to battle with.
I totally get that, so.
I would say we could probably at least run it for provided no interruptions, or the fires blow it out or whatever. We could probably run it for at least three days, it'll be a key business for the first, at least for a couple of years.
I'm looking at about a year and a half to three years to pay. Depending on if it's for basically one, a half day or one day a week, twice a month. But it, it does scale pretty quick, assuming we're going to utilize, you know, assuming we're going to have the need to use it. And that's why I asked if that's work we're not getting to now, because it's kind of a skewed comparison if if we weren't going to hire out these culvert cleaning anyways, you know what I mean? If that was going to be done through some of their means, then maybe that's not necessarily a gain. So I, I mean, I'll leave that to you, kind of what your view is on that. Those eight culverts. Do those kind of sit there or like, how do we address that?
Right now, we just. Kind of keep them open as much as we can. And when if we don't have time. Let's see, our fee come in, they have time.
Which they're more expensive.
Yep. Look them in for their three hour minimum and clean those culverts. But usually when we try to call them, we usually get a nice list going. Be like, hey, we have enough to keep you busy for a week. Um, because of the list, start at the top and just work your way down. And that's usually what they do. So.
Yeah, I, that's what I think my thought is, about a year and a half to three.
Scott, you had one of these in your.
Yes.
City prior to this, but it was a lot larger.
Correct.
And the use of that piece of equipment. And the labor that went into that. You, you felt comfortable with?
I, I do. Yes, I do. Uh, one thing, you made me think of another item there, Dave. Uh, so I did want to point out, uh, I should have mentioned earlier. Uh, we would be, uh, buying this if the council does agree to this through the state bid compact, which is, uh, the, uh, competitive purchasing. So it's like a sole source procurement. So we're able to buy this equipment quite a bit less than what the, the retail price on it. So like, you would mention Kenway a few times. So, so we have access to be able to get this at much better pricing, uh, than what a private person could. So, so this would be bought under the source well pricing contract.
Any other questions? I guess, um. This vacuuming technology seems to be a fairly, or a more recent. Uh, technology and. Way to accomplish the excavations. And does it? Does it make the job, say cleaner when you do the work with it?
It does. It does not do the, the excavator shovel, you know, you're going to throw your pile aside. This will suck all of that up. There will be no bad luck. On the surface, on the street or yard or wherever you're working. It's also a safer way to, when you come down to a utility. Or shovels can cut the fiber, cut, interduct or whatever for the gas or whatever. This will not do that.
What, one other dumb question. Where, where do we put big stuff when it's, when you get rid of it? Do we, do we have a dump spot or?
So if it's. If it's dirt, particularly dirt, rocks, it will go out to the dirt pile on the north side of Little Gooms. When they built sewer plants or if it's anything that has sanitary sewer waste in it. We have cell number one that we dump it in, go out there and then it will go to the. Do the point.
Make sense.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you, Jared, for your time tonight. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming out again on your night off. Right. So with that, do we have a motion to approve the purchase?
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase.
Motion by Peterson. Do you have a second?
Okay.
Second by Dersky. Any further questions? Okay, hearing none. Roll call vote. Trevor Dersky. EJ Bell. Samantha Peterson.
Hi.
David Fisher.
Hi.
Carrie's. And moving on to item, uh, number four B. Consideration of a three year lease purchase agreement for a 2024 CAT excavator. And, uh, skid, and skid steer loader. And again, this is an item that was tabled at the last council meeting and therefore would, would require a motion to place the item back on the table for tonight's meeting. And so do we have a motion to, um. Uh, to take the item off the table?
We should remove it from the table.
Okay.
Motion by Fisher, second by Bell. And for the discussion. Hearing none, the roll call vote. Trevor Dersky.
Hi.
EJ Bell.
Hi.
Samantha Peterson.
Hi.
David Fisher. Carrie's. The item is on the table again for consideration. And, um. Once again, well, uh, this time, this time Scott, if, um, you're available, let's, uh.
Yep.
Do you like to begin with review of that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, I will. That, thank you, Eric. Uh, before I start now, I would just want to thank, uh, the council again for your, uh, your good support on, uh, the purchase of this equipment. It's much appreciated. Uh, on this item, uh, this is, uh, we have, as you probably well know, we currently lease these same pieces of equipment, a skid steer loader and an excavator. Uh, from Altorfer. Uh, the lease on that, when you entered into that lease, that was a three year lease. So that lease agreement is coming up. I think it's up actually this month. Uh, so Jared, as part of his budget, had, uh, looked into, uh, exploring the opportunity to renew that lease for another three year term. We do have some equity buildup into that lease agreement. So what this would be, would be to roll that lease over, uh, for the, essentially the same pieces of equipment, only newer. Uh, I do want to point out, uh, Jared was able to clarify that the excavator is a twenty-five and not a twenty-four. So did want to point that out. But, uh, against the same kind of uses, uh, that, uh, the, the department's been using, uh, the existing pieces of equipment, uh, for now. So, um, I guess I don't have anything really further in terms of any background on that. Uh, I don't, unless Jared, you wanted to add anything to that?
Um, one thing I added is the excavators is. Could be designed to, to further dig and get. The new excavator, one of the new features of it, upgrade control or defect. Um, that is to allow digging ditches a lot simpler. Um, you're pretty much going with your bucket, set down where your final grade is going to be. And it has obstacle tolls when you're digging. That tells you when, when you're close to that next mark to give you your crab elevations for. They can set dishes up and just.
You test on a mine?
Yep. I mean, that's all. I mean, it's all right. Cause everything, there's a part of town where we're circling through and all that stuff. Positions are dire needed, uh, cleaning. This is just another tool to help us achieve that goal of getting that picked up. Getting all the business picked up on the start of water. I mean, through town. In this demand or so. I'll just get loaded and use, use it daily. Depending whether it's putting mulch in the playground, pulsing around the trees, hauling rock, working the trails, moving the trails. Winter time, do a box blade for it. It works great for moving in between cars downtown. I'll get them to take a box blade. Works great for getting the snow officially. The sidewalks for the winter time. And it's. They are really into using the proper. Do you guys have any questions?
Me either.
Yeah.
Again, I, I go back to the. Return on investment. You know, we're looking at twenty-three thousand dollars for that excavator a year. And sixteen thousand dollars for the skid loader. And when I went on tours. I found out that we had another skid loader. And then when I asked the question, you know, why do we got two skid, skid loaders? And the answer was because that one's old. Not that it, I mean, it can do the same work.
It's not as big as this one releasing. But the one releasing has seventy-five horsepower. Good motor, so it allows it to have bigger attachments. Efficient attachment. Whereas the one we have, the older one. That is a smaller, more compact. That would be for. That's what it. I can't find what they have to get into. So like there's a waterman, I know when I first started in the city, there's a waterman behind the condos on Highway Avenue. We have a decent through there. And that's where that skid loader came in real handy was getting around the little one. Getting around back there and doing dirt work and rebuilding and retaining all of those. Ruined for a waterman break. So that skid loader is two thousand. Three, I think. So it's still, it's still got life left in it. It's just. A little small for doing bigger projects.
So it did have cap?
It does. It has eight. So.
Yeah, my concern was they couldn't be used for winter, snow. So that's what, um. I, I questioned, you know. Thirty-nine thousand dollars a year. And, and the reason I questioned the twenty-three thousand is we had an excavator for three years. Right? I'm, I'm not aware. And I'm not poking at you. I'm not doing anything from that perspective. But I don't know of a. Ditch that was fixed. Matter of fact, we had a, uh, citizen that came in here and. Was saying he's an elderly gentleman that really couldn't do it anymore. He had to. To go out and weed his ditch and he just can't get it done anymore. Um, which it might. I think that. I think we want to take care of that for somebody that's an elderly gentleman that we don't want him out there, uh, running a weed eater at whatever age he is. Um, and is there anything he could have done? And I, I'm. I'm just trying to figure out what we did with the last one that paid for itself over that three year period.
That one was basically mostly used up on that trail that we have going out of town because it's for removing trees and grims. That ditch. On railroad north of Cardinal. Where it goes to the city property, we've used it to recreate that, clean it out. Um. We actually just did it here a couple of weeks ago. They have a culvert back there. And actually separated. If Mike and I had done it all out, resealed it, put it back together. Put it back together. Uh, we've done. The ditch over by Diane Herman's. We did this for that. Um, sort of, that was sort of after we got it. Um, there's a couple of additions that we've kind of groomed, but haven't got really invaded with it. So I mean, we've done some dishes with it. The problem is this. The main problem we have is when we pull up, we do a locate, and we pull up to the property to do the ditch. We have homeowners coming out screaming out of the stomach, you're not touching my ditch. That is the biggest problem we have. So with the elderly gentleman that was up here for his dish, I actually cleaned that out the year before we got the excavator, wrestling mirror renting. I cleaned the dish. And I have talked to the engineer on how to fix it, the way the homeowner wants to fix it. The engineer is not a fan. Because it's not a ditch. Ditches are designed to, but it involves a topic. Different dishes are done, designed to swell. Put a pipe in there, water can swell. So that's a push of water back uphill, where it can swell and cause a whole problem.
But for the, uh, for the skid steer, you use it in the wintertime?
Correct.
How often? Do you use it every snow or?
It's out for three or four hours every time. We're doing a nap in the snow event. We're bringing it up here. We'll touch up the parking lot. Touch up all the parking downtown is hard to move. That's our. Go to for finish, wind it up, the snow. So nimble, these are the nimble, they're not gonna fail the payload.
Hey, Scott?
Yeah.
These rates on this schedule here, there are the hours rather, there's two hundred and seventy-nine and four hundred and nine listed under the excavator and skid loader respectively. Are those the hours we put on the machines?
Correct.
Yeah. Over the life?
Nope.
Over the three years. The alternative to leasing is then we rent every time we need it?
Rent every time we need it. So this will give you kind of an idea when we were renting. When we were renting an excavator before we got one to the lease. The month rent for the excavator was thirty-nine hundred dollars a month.
Yeah, I remember, uh, so we changed that. That was one of the reasons why we changed it to leasing. Because we talked about buying and they were just astronomical. And then it was talked about if we did buy it, you start putting. The wear and tear on it, that we got to start paying the money. Of it. And it's just the price is considerably higher than the maintenance. And I can actually.
Is, and maintenance is included in the lease? Or oil changes? Okay, but you can do that or no?
Well, so what we've been doing is we have CAT come out. And when they do do oil change once a year, they inspect the entire piece of equipment. If anything's broke. Needs repaired. We have them obviously repair it. So up and around, safe piece of equipment to operate. So, uh, as a change in oil, no, we do not, we reuse it if we need it, as required by the manual, we will reuse it. That includes all that, uh, public services. We let them do a provision action also.
Who'd you say uses it more, you or Mike?
I think Mike has been. Like I've been. Chasing fires and. Got some homeowners complaining with those.
Any more questions?
Just confirming. Fuel consumption is not, you pay that out of the way, right? We're paying for the fuel. And so, yeah, I mean, it, it, there's a, there seems to be a gain on the year of about. Six thousand or seven thousand dollars leasing in, um. That's just on the labor. What about rent rates versus lease? No, no, that's for both. So this one thirty-five and this one fifty, Scott, those are the, those are the higher, those are the hourly rates to rent an excavator and a skid loader?
Correct.
Yeah, I, I think you, you pick up about six or eight thousand dollars a year. Obviously that scales the more or less you use it. They average about ninety hours on the excavator and a hundred and forty on the skid loader a year. Hey Scott, just out of curiosity. In Clear Lake, did, I, obviously Clear Lake is considerably bigger, obviously, but. How did, like Clear Lake do it? Did they lease or did they just buy equipment constantly? I'm just asking.
Yep, yeah, we, we bought it.
Bought?
Yep.
Well, there is an option that definitely makes two persons of the equipment. So the element that. These have given the package.
Yeah. Which.
That thought was something to entertain later or.
Person.
First is.
I just say, having said that, we, we kept it a long period of time though, too.
Well, you, you said built up equity, Scott? I think.
Well, I didn't get that.
Did you say something about, I just want to confirm, it seems unusual. Like you said something about had an equity buildup or something in the.
Correct. Yep. So we've got some equity buildup into the current lease situation. I, Jared, do you remember how much that was? It was about ten thousand dollars?
I think it was about ten thousand a piece. One was ten, one was nine or something like.
And. And is that accounted for in that purchase option?
I, well, I don't know. We didn't. I, well, I don't know, we didn't. So that equity would be off of the lease, on the lease agreement. So what it would be if we went to purchase? I didn't ask that question to them.
I mean, I mean, I'm assuming what that means is our lease payments have exceeded what the depreciation rate is on the equipment. It's as it stands, it's worth more than what we paid to lease.
Correct.
But do we get a buy at that reduced rate, I guess is the idea?
That would be, that would be my understanding, yes.
I can understand if the, if the rest of the council is not ready to, to change the method from lease, lease to buy. And maybe we don't feel comfortable with that, but. I do feel like we, we are saving money by leasing versus renting. By the volume of hours.
And the rental. Uh, the rental episode was largely to figure out how much are we going to use it? We did find that the, um, the, the rental rates. Were, were more expensive than leasing, but, uh, but that, you know, we did a trial run there for about six months to see, is it really going to pay off to, uh, to lease that, so.
But rental, if I'm correct. You're not. Bound by hours.
No, but that was a, a, um, that was a experiment, so to speak, to see would we have time, would we have the. Uh, uses for a piece of equipment without having to commit to a purchase or a lease on it. So during that time, we did, we did have experience with renting. Uh, for a couple of years, I think there, just to see how, how it would play out. If you go to, you know, uh, any contractor or farm, that sort of thing. Uh, especially a skid steer type of equipment is just about everywhere. Just because of their utility and usefulness in those environments. This helps you get the job done.
Okay, hearing no further discussion. Is there a motion to approve the lease purchase agreement?
Much to approve.
A motion by Jerzky. With a second.
All second.
Second, talking about Peterson. Any further discussion?
I think this, I think it would be good to hear, depending on how this goes, but I think it would be good to hear. Maybe, uh, utilization report, Scott, going forward?
Yeah.
So in.
Good idea.
In two to three years, we maybe are in a better position to, to make a decision if this is something we should. If we should buy or continue to lease, if there's additional savings there.
Yeah, good idea.
I would agree with, I would agree with that, because to know what. You know, what it would actually be to purchase these after doing this, like a pinpoint even more than what we're doing now. I think their guidance is easier, make it easier for the councils moving forward.
Yep.
All right.
So purchase, you can't, you can't have one sitting there like we got now.
Yeah, it has to be.
A piece of equipment that'll just sit in there. And that's my point is. We've got this perfectly good piece of equipment that has a cab that's not an issue from, it can still perform all the tasks that. Unless there is another task that it can't perform, but it can perform everything. But I mean, if we, if we were to go out and purchase a thing, we'd be sitting here going, now we gotta repurchase one in. Ten years because it's old and I, I struggle with that because every farm around here has got. Twenty, thirty-year-old equipment that's being utilized.
That would be good, too, is just to capture that horsepower piece. To Dave's point, if we've got redundant, if we, if we got one tool. That can do most of the stuff, we'd really want to know what utilization is for hours that the smaller one could do. Versus just hour that you, you could only use the larger one for, for the purchase piece. I agree with you too.
But we do have a seventy-two throw up better for the skid loader. And that little skid loader will knock on it, it does not have a horsepower to turn it. It probably could, but it would be for mowing. It would not be for. Mowing the lagoon, stuff, the tall tip grass, it would not get through that.
And that, yeah, so this is a great season, just like. When we get to the end of mowing, just the number of hours that, that that piece was used.
Um, it takes, and we use it, that big one with the brush more, mow the lagoon, just mow it once a year for the. Tall grass, it means to be put knocked down. It takes all of a day and a half with this. Out there mowing.
So what's, what's being asked of you here is. Putting together a spreadsheet, keep track of all the hours of reutilizing it, or are you willing to do that?
Yeah.
It'll just make it easier for us to make the decision or whoever's up here.
A little more work at my.
Like the law, everybody, the law just takes you two seconds. At the end of the day.
All right. Any further discussion? Hey, hearing none, roll call vote to approve. Trevor Jerzky. EJ Bell.
Hi.
Samantha Peterson.
Hi.
David Fisher.
Jim.
James Anderson, motion carries.
I need to go tend to my kids that are home.
Thanks, Jared, thanks, Jared. Yeah. Sure. Enjoy your vacation.
No, thanks for coming.
Okay, moving on to item number five, new business. A notice of intent to not renew municipal solid waste recycling and yard waste agreement with waste management. And, um, Scott, I'll have you, uh.
Yeah.
Introduce that.
Yep, okay, thank you, Mayor. Just once again, thanks for that good, uh, strong discussion on the last item, Council, much appreciated. Uh, this item, as Mayor indicated, uh, is a notice of intent to not renew our solid waste and recycling as well as yard waste. Agreement with waste management, that agreement that we currently have. Does expire at the end of this calendar year, so, uh, December thirty-first of twenty twenty-five. I've included in your packet a copy of that existing agreement and it's under section two. Where it's memorialized that if either party wishes to not renew, uh, the agreement for a, uh. What was an automatic renewal of one year, then the party needs to give notice to the other party within, uh, ninety days. Prior to the end of when that current term ends. So, so we're out in front a little bit, but, but for good reason. On that, you know, this is something I think again that, um, you know, since I've been here, I've had a number of haulers have expressed strong interest. Uh, in the city's contract and establishing a relationship with the city. Uh, it's not something that the city has done previously, to my knowledge, I don't believe there's, uh, been an RFP issued, uh, maybe ever, I'm not sure of that, but, uh. Uh, you know, just again, a good business practice, uh, to issue, uh, these RFPs just to ensure again that, uh. For our ratepayers that we're getting the best value possible for the dollars that they're paying. So, uh, what we recommend is providing waste management, and you've got a copy, I worked with Doug, uh, the city attorney to, uh, prepare the notice that we would send to waste management. I should mention that I have also had a personal conversation, uh, with waste management and I found them to be very responsive. Uh, to some of the concerns that, that, um, I felt were appropriate to them. So certainly look forward to them, uh, yeah, responding to our RFP and submitting a proposal to continue on with their relate, relationship with the city. Uh, but that is the letter that, uh, we would provide, uh, the gentleman there with waste management, uh, indicating to him. Uh, of our intent not to renew the existing contract within the scope of the, uh, agreement that we have with, with waste management. In terms of the, uh, you know, where do we go from here after this? If the council would approve, uh, authorizing this, uh, notice to be submitted, then we would draft a request for proposals, uh, and we would send that out, uh. Uh, to area haulers, I would expect based on what I've seen in other communities here in the area. That we will see strong interest in the city's, uh, uh, solicitation for response to our RFP. So I would say we'd probably get that out in July, uh, look to have those proposals back to us sometime in August and, and then. Uh, bring back for the council, uh, consideration, probably around, uh, probably that first meeting in September. That would allow, if there is a change in haulers, that would allow that, uh, that hauler the opportunity to secure the necessary, uh, cans and logistics and set that operation up. Uh, the new contract would then have an effective date of January one of twenty twenty-six, so. Again, I think, uh, just, uh, I think a good business decision for us to, uh, us to do this and see, uh, see how the numbers come out, uh. Uh, you know, we can, when we develop the RFP, you'll get a chance to kind of go through maybe the more specific things about, uh, maybe things you'd like to see changed differently in terms of collection, but I think otherwise. What we have seems to work pretty well in terms of the size of the cans, the frequency of collection for solid waste and yard waste, as well as the bi, bi-weekly there for, uh, recycling. So, uh, and again, it's probably something, again, the RFP, we talk about how many years we want, uh, in the contract and discuss a number of items there in the RFP. But for tonight, it's just kind of kicking the process off to provide the necessary notice, uh, within that timeframe. To waste management and also provide us with a necessary, uh, frame, timeframe here that, uh, we can have a competitive, uh, uh, process, so. Pappy, do you answer any questions if anybody has them?
Yeah, I know that there's a lot of. The complaint of just the sheer cost that everybody's bills are, so anything that could potentially reduce the. The bill of everybody's monthly garbage, water, all that stuff. I think the residents would be pleased and then hopefully getting someone, if it's waste manager, if they were to get it or whoever else. Maybe solve some of the problems of picking up garbage and maybe less complaints and stuff like that, so.
I really don't have a question for you, Scott, but I, again. This is something that when I was going around knocking on doors, campaigning. That I talked about because I had heartburn about how that was all transpired as well with. That it was just basically told to the residents, this is where we're going with our, our solid waste. And again, I appreciate your due diligence on this and getting on top of it and taking care of it for us, I appreciate it.
Uh, Scott, before I forget, and we can have a side conversation down the road or whatever. One of the, I'm just trying to go back and, you know, Bruce and Sammy, you may remember this, obviously, but one of the complaints that we had when we. Did negotiate waste management, if memory serves me correct, was the size of the can.
Hmm.
Um, if memory serves me right, we went with the bigger size because they did like a statistic on who had bigger cans, but they did not have the ability. Or us as a city, I can't remember which one was it? That there was people, residents like, well, hey, I'm elderly, I have, I need a smaller can, I need a bigger one, if it can save me money on their bill. I don't know if that's something as a city we can look into, that's something that. Certain, if some, a family says, hey, I don't need this much garbage compared to my family who has, I have five kids. So I don't know if that's something that we need to have a conversation on the side, but. I remember that being part of the discussion of what, you know, everybody has a thing size can compared to some. Had, were upset that they couldn't go with the smaller can, if that makes sense.
Yeah, no, I understand that fully. Now, what I would tell you and what I've seen in bid results and responses from. A lot of, a lot of situations where I've been able to look at the numbers, the cost that the haulers are providing is the same cost, uh, regardless of whether it's a. Thirty-two gallon can, a sixty-four gallon can, or a ninety-six gallon can, so, uh, there's, there's really not any discount, I see. So, so some communities have, uh, done what you're asking and, and asked for a quote on those specifics. And the numbers have come back, I think the haulers say, hey, look, it's the same cost to empty a thirty-two gallon can as it is a sixty-four, as it is a ninety-six. The, the only difference is, of course, when you go to the landfill, uh, the tipping fees are just going to be a little bit less, but not, not significant. But, but yeah, I, I was a little bit surprised when I've seen that in other communities, uh, that the, the numbers are exactly the same, regardless of the size of can.
Okay. All right, I just remember that was a discussion.
Another, another topic that was brought up when we discussed this a while back was, um, right now we've got garbage pickup every week and recycling. Other week, and there were some that were just curious to know what it might cost for recycling every week, I guess. Was the question that brought up, that might be.
Correct.
Helpful to check that out, too.
Yeah, no, I think that's definitely something that we'll see back in terms of responses to our, our F P solicitation. I think, uh, uh, the haulers, they'll, they'll throw some bells and whistles on top of their proposal. And it may be that, uh, they, uh, there is an opportunity for weekly recycling as well.
Yeah, one thing on the, uh, different sizes of the containers, it becomes a administrative burden. Uh, if you do have different rates, um, so therefore. The hauler suggested having just one rate, no matter what size you had, um, just because. Keeping track of who has a sixty-four versus a ninety-six versus whatever, and, and the suppliers have to, would have to stock the different.
Correct.
Sizes as well, so it becomes a, uh, somewhat of a burden there, but.
Yep, this is great, Scott.
Um, no, thank you.
Let's do this.
All right, so we have a motion to approve resolution two zero two five zero six zero one.
I think everybody.
Motion by Fisher, second by Bell. Any further discussion? Hearing none, the roll call vote is Trevor Jerzky. EJ Bell.
Hi.
Samantha Peterson.
Hi.
David Fisher.
Hi.
Absent, motion carries. Moving on to item number five, B, computer-based systems policy and disaster recovery plan. Scott, let you take it away there.
Yep, yep, thank you, Mayor. Uh, you feel free to chime in here as well if you wish. Uh, so this is something that's been identified in the city audits that have been performed for the last four years for us. Uh, uh, the auditor makes findings and recommendations, and one of them was, uh, that we lacked a computer-based systems policy and disaster recovery plan. So I have drafted that and, and I do want to emphasize that by no means is to, to reflect that, uh, uh, we didn't have, uh, the necessary, uh, uh, protocols and, and measures in place. Uh, to effectively respond in these kinds of situations. I mean, obviously what y'all went through in, uh, August of twenty twenty, I don't think there's probably too many communities that demonstrated their resiliency quite the way. That Atkins did in, uh, terms of your IT and, and fiscal abilities to get back up and running with your, your, uh, fiscal, uh, and, and IT software infrastructure. So, so again, this is just something that's been called out in our audit, uh, essentially they're looking for us to have a, a written policy that, uh, uh, identifies these reasonable safeguards to, to ensure that. When there is one of these disruptive events, that there is a recovery and restoration process related to IT systems, infrastructure, fiscal. Software, all those kinds of things. And so the policy that we drafted here, I, I looked at, uh, many of them, uh, we, we, this is pretty consistent with what we had in my other communities. Uh, some I've seen that are twenty pages, others I've seen are a half a page. So I, I did kind of share this with the auditor that's been doing our work and, you know, they made some suggestions back to us, so I incorporated some of those, not all of them, but some of those, uh. Uh, you know, we don't need to create a Frankenstein's monster with some of it, but I think we've adequately covered all the things that they're, they're looking for in terms of the, uh. Uh, the computer-based system policy disaster recovery plan, so, uh, this is, I mentioned, is one of those that has been identified in the audit is a, what they call a significant deficiency. So as we're continuing to work through the list of items in the audit, you know, we've had our initial review with the auditor. Just trying to knock some of these, uh, dings, as I'll call them, off of the audit and, and then to be able to issue, uh, I think a more, you know. Uh I think a more, you know, meaningful response back when the auditor makes these suggestions to come back and be able to say. So for example, on this one, my response back to the auditor was that we have this policy on the docket for your consideration on June tenth. Uh so trying to give a real effective response back, just to let them know that uh, you'll, this is not something we're going to let. Uh sit dormant, we're going to act on it, and when we come time to do our fiscal year twenty-five audit, this, this will not be something we have to contend with for that year, so. Uh so, yeah, we've got in the packet a resolution that uh approves that computer-based systems policy disaster recovery. Plan for a financial continuity, uh and then, you know, that really is all, all we have to do, so.
Right, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Fisher, second by Bill, any further discussion? Yes, I would add that our. Our current operations of the IT system exceeds the. The uh policy and that, that's fine, it's just that um. It's to make sure we have a minimum functionality in place, and we do. With that, the roll call votes is uh Trevor Dersky, EJ Bell, Samantha Peterson.
Hi.
And David Fisher. There is. Yeah, moving on to item number five C, and I'm going to um. Put a recess for just three minutes here, I need to plug in my laptop.
Well, there it is. I know, my kids are excited to go up there, I wonder if she's still, she's still going at all, I know we've worked it out at seven, but. Lot better weather this week, this too there, you know, I'm glad they canceled it and we can redo it.
Oh, yeah, you're right. Yeah, no problem.
I'm not getting up. Not much, fifteen.
Do I move to a different outlet?
No. Well, we'll just continue on here and uh. Take care of some things. Next item is the city investment policy and uh the battery is going down quickly, so. Okay, that's resolution two zero two five zero six zero three, resolution approving investment policy.
Light up the battery going down fast, I'll talk fast, so, so this is something, again, uh, yeah, appreciate the council's patience as we work through some of these things for. Uh our audit report, this is something that was mentioned previously, uh in audits uh that the city, and I actually, I think is one of the first things Trevor had mentioned. Uh uh very early on in beginning here was a need for the investment policy, so uh it took about three months, but here we go, Trevor. So, so this is uh something pursuant to section twelve B and twelve C of the Code of Iowa. Uh, you know, this was not something that was mentioned in this current fiscal year's audit because the city didn't have any investments that they, they had made this year. But we definitely will with the bond proceeds for fiscal year twenty-five, we have made investments uh there and that, that is doing quite well for us. So we want to avoid having a, a ding for the fiscal year twenty-five audit by not having an approved investment policy. So the policy that I've drafted and and Trevor's uh contributed some to that as well, and I'll let him kind of elaborate on that if he would like. Uh this satisfies the, the requirements uh under the Iowa code, chapter twelve B and twelve C, uh to have the uh investment policy. I've also added uh an update to our depository resolution. Uh and that one is adding, uh it, it basically identifies that uh the city administrator, the mayor, the city clerk, the deputy clerk, all have. Abilities to make deposits on behalf of the city. That uh resolution was last looked at in, oh, let's see what the date on, I think it was two thousand and eighteen. So definitely was ready for a refresher, we've added IPAT to that, the, the council has approved IPAT recently. Uh still need to do a couple of things with them, but it also keeps the uh deposit amounts the same at Atkins Savings Bank and Trust. You know, the maximum amount under the current resolution is ten million dollars, and the maximum amount under the proposed resolution would ten, be ten million dollars. And same thing for IPAT, really where that amount would probably come into play would be as if we were uh doing. A large uh bond issue for, let's say, a um new water plant or something along those lines, and we had issued a very sizable bond. Otherwise, you know, the likelihood of us depositing ten million is probably uh pretty, pretty unlikely or remote. But again, that's uh, that's just something that uh the, the auditors had uh wanted us to, to uh implement and the. Investment policy in and of itself, again, the objectives are, and these are all laid out pretty, there's model policies uh that you follow. This one I used from my communities previously, but they're pretty consistent across the board, and there's three primary objectives. Safety, liquidity, uh and return on investment, so those are really the, the primary objectives that you have uh with the investment policy, so. Um, I don't know, that's probably all I have for some background, Trevor, did you want to comment on some of the things you added?
Sure, um. Looks like mainly just, again, best practices for investment policy statement, um managing third-party funds, but. Uh well, first party in the state, I guess, but from our standpoint as, as council members, thinking about how the, how the city manages its funds. One thing I didn't, I don't, I, I, did you grab the delineation between investable cash and operating cash in there?
I did, yep, yep, I did, yep, and perfectly understandable, yep.
So that was one thing was just to stipulate that we identify ahead of time what's operating and what's investing. Um and then there's different maturity limits on those in terms of the investment and then adding concentration limits, so we're not. All in on a, on a specific CD at a specific bank. Um if we go through iPad, I'm sure, you know, this is stuff they're already anticipating and inspecting, expecting, but um just getting it into our, our policy is. It's just a good idea, um.
Yep.
There's a couple of other things we talked about, Scott, but no, I appreciate, appreciate you considering those items and, and rolling them in.
No, I appreciate your expertise on that, those were uh were some good suggestions.
For the discussion? Do we have a motion to approve resolution two zero two five zero three, resolution approving investment policy? Trevor, would you like to? Leave on that one?
Motion, motion approve.
Yeah. Second? Anyone? Second by Bill? For the discussion? Hearing none, the roll call is Trevor Dersky, EJ Bell, Samantha Peterson.
Hi.
David Fisher. Absent, motion carries. Okay, moving on to item, further item that in that section is a motion to approve. Resolution amending resolution six eighty-five by naming additional depositories and authorize officials. Uh Scott talked about this a little bit, but any further discussion necessary, Scott?
Uh no, nope.
Okay. I have a motion to approve. Anyone?
Motion approve.
Motion by Bill, any second?
I can second.
Second by Peterson. Any further discussion? Okay, moving on then to the roll call, Trevor Dersky, EJ Bell.
Hi.
David Fisher, Samantha Peterson.
Hi.
Motion carries. Then um city administrators report, Scott?
Yep, uh real quick, just a couple items here, just a quick update on the fire station project, uh uh just as an aside at the last uh construction conference. Garland had shared with us that they were glad they ordered the pre-engineered metal building when they did because they're seeing some significant delays on other projects on those, so. Uh somewhere in the neighborhood of, you know, three months in some cases, so glad we got that when we did. Uh the erectors on the steel are about as far as they can go uh for the time being, should this week and into next week, start with some insulation, roof panels. Uh working on the footings and walls there, as you've seen in the safe room on the inside there. There'll be some miscellaneous metal framing work that goes on here in the next uh week or so. Uh continuing on, obviously, the utility work, probably seen that out in the parking lot, still the utilities, uh Lyant, Mid-Am still working. Out there, uh and then pretty soon, they'll probably be starting here on some of the parking lot removals, so. Uh that's all I've got on that one, moving on to the uh sewer project with Dave Schmidt, uh construction there in Cedar Rapids. They anticipate starting on June twenty-third, uh they don't think it's going to be much more than about ten days worth of work, uh weather permitting. Uh just as a reminder, the completion date on that is August first, so they should be done uh well ahead of time. Probably looking at maybe one, maybe at the most two pay estimates on that one, so. Uh didn't anticipate uh, you know, too much difficulty there being done with that project well on time, so. And that's all I've got for my report, unless anybody has any questions.
Okay, moving on then to the mayor's report, thank you, Scott, by the way. First item is an appointment to the library board trustees or um Rita LaPan. You saw in the packets um her application for that, and I've chatted with her about it, and uh. It feels um. She's ready and willing to um. To fill that role, so at this point, I would recommend appointing Rita LaPan to the library board trustees. Anyone like to make that motion?
Point three, look at.
Motion by Dersky, second by Bill. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call vote is Trevor Dersky, Jay Bell, David Fisher, Samantha Peterson.
Hi.
Motion carries. Then uh also the roundhouse area is open for limited uses, uh that's under the direction of the um. Kent County Conservation Commission, the owners, the property managers. And um, uh please look to their website and um and Facebook for opportunities to help out there. Uh also, they have uh volunteer opportunities as well, so again, they. They're managing that property and the cleanup and restoration, so it's great to have that open. That's all I had, and then for the consent agenda this evening. Ask, uh which is the approval of bills and claims and uh renewal of the cigarette permit for the depot. And the Dollar General stores, and then the minutes of May twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five council meeting. So for, for that consent agenda, we would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to. Agenda.
Motion by Peterson. Do I have a second? Second by Dersky. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, roll call vote, Trevor Dersky. EJ Bell.
Hi.
David Fisher.
Hi.
Peterson.
Hi.
Motion carries. Moving on to other business. One item of business I'd like to note is that we've uh since the construction of the fire station has moved up to the. Open area by the parking lot, that's been fenced off, so um. Just, again, it's a construction area, so take caution in that area, and uh we'll continue to monitor those areas and. See what we need to do to have the contractor um fence those off, that's something that happened today, Scott, was uh.
Oh, okay.
We'd noticed, we'd noticed that the um, the foot traffic was trying to cut in between some of the equipment, so we asked the contractor to. Start taking steps to fence that off a little bit while they're temporarily working. Okay, I do a good job doing that.
Um, one of my things I think we should talk about is since we had. You know, went through all that work for that property, is that uh have discussion of selling it. I don't think, you know, we're not doing anything with it, we're maintaining it, we're using a cost to maintain it, we're never going to do nothing with it. It's been sitting there for years, I think it'd be. Good just for the city to let it go, I think properties in Akron seem to sell for a premium. I'm sure we'd probably get a premium for it, if not, make some money, get it back to the town to pay off other things, or just use it for something. Think, I don't know what process needs to happen there, Scott, I don't know.
Sure.
If that's, got some, if everybody has something, I'm assuming we have to agree to that.
Yep, we'd have to come back, but we, I can put that on the next agenda if you'd like, uh we can put that on, so five nineteen, high point, uh just a discussion on uh possible sale of that lot.
Yep, absolutely, I don't know if anybody else has thoughts on that. That, that would have previously been. And that had been previously proposed as some alternate use.
It was twelve three, it was like a little park, six nineteen. Yeah, just like a little, and like a, yeah, like a little neighborhood park kind of thing, but.
Shout out to Rita LaPan for um the work she did out here in front of this, the uh. City Hall and the library.
Yeah.
All in all, please, uh she did a nice job.
Yeah, thank you for mentioning that, she did a great job.
All right. Well, with that, um. Completed our business for this evening and um. Would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Bell, second by Dersky. Roll call vote, Trevor Dersky.
Hi.
Bell.
Hi.
Samantha Peterson.
Hi.
This, David Fisher.
Hi.
All right, thanks, everyone, have a good evening.
Terrific meeting, thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Scott.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
I'll let you go, Scott, thank you.